Great. Good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting in the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is August 4th, 2021, and we will begin with our public statement read by Commissioner Giffens.
Morning. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCFC.
Thank you so much. We will now move on to department updates. And our first update comes from the Health Department. Good morning, Ms. Cottle.
Good morning to you. Just a few updates in terms of data and where we are. I want to start with 7/21. On the 21st of July, on the advisory map, we were in blue. We had 51 cases per 100,000 people and a positivity rate of 4.65%. Those numbers had been ticking up a little bit. They had been lower in weeks prior to that. Last week, on 7/28, we moved to yellow advisory status with 58 cases per 100,000 and a positivity rate of 6.91%. This week, I expect us to be just under 100 cases per 100,000. So we will remain in yellow. We are very close to orange. When we hit 100 cases per 100,000, that state advisory map will move to orange. So I wanted to make sure that people understood that, that the numbers again are going in the wrong direction. Unfortunately, we also added two new deaths that were reported yesterday. So our, our death total is now 180 people have died as a direct consequence of COVID-19. I would like to remain optimistic. I always try to, to look on the brighter side of things, but it is hard to believe that we will not be orange when I see you next Wednesday for this update. I also want to note that there is a difference between the different trackers or maps that you see, even though they may use the same colors. The CDC guidance and their new recommendations are based on any cases over 50 per 100,000 is considered by the CDC to be substantial transmission. So there is possibility that the state will change their map somehow as well. So that is a little bit of a discrepancy when you're looking at those two things that I want to share with you. I want to share some things about the Delta variant. I think that anybody following the news understands that that is the predominant strain. People infected with the Delta variant carry up to 1,000 times more virus in their nasal passages than other strains, and that results in the higher transmissibility. And that is even among vaccinated. So while still small, if you are vaccinated, it is possible if you are fully vaccinated and you have a breakthrough case, you still get infected, that you are able to transmit that infection. The CDC says that fully vaccinated individuals may spread the Delta variant at the same rate as those who are unvaccinated. The data showed that the Delta variant is about as transmissible as the chickenpox, with each infected person averaging about eight or nine other people. The original lineage was about as transmissible as the common cold, with each infected person passing the virus to an average of two people. So we have a race to vaccination, and we've been talking about that for a while. But I want to stress that too. Why is vaccination so important? With vaccination, we limit transmission because with increased transmission, we have more variants and variants that are much more likely to escape our vaccine. Right now, the vaccine is effective against the variants, but if we continue to grow new ones, that may not be the case. So what's really the danger or the concerns with very, with Delta? It is more transmissible from one person to another. It is infectivity that we know that people who are fully vaccinated may in some cases still become infected and may be able to spread the infection. Infectivity accounts for more breakthrough cases. So the Delta variant, we are seeing more breakthrough cases with this because of that high level of transmissibility. It is widespread. In the past month, the state has reported, so the past four weeks, all, all, 100% of all of the samples that were tested for variants were Delta. So that is an important piece of information to have as well. May, in May, less than 1% of the variants were Delta. And today, we've seen over a 400% increase in that. So when you look at that state map today, the advisory map, then we'll be yellow. But I mentioned that very close to, to turning orange. Seven-day positivity rate, there are actually three different maps that you can see. There's the total that gives you the advisory you're in, but it also breaks it down and you can look at it by two metrics. One is the seven-day positivity rate. And this week, you will see five counties in red. Now, we had a period where we were getting much more blue and very little yellow and had no red. So five counties in red based on positivity rates and based on cases per 100,000, you will see 11 counties in red today. So the top things that you want to know about Delta, just kind of to summarize, getting vaccinated prevents severe disease, hospitalizations, and deaths. It helps reduce the spread, which also helps reduce the number of variants and the strength of what those variants may, may bring upon us. Delta is different than past versions of the virus. It's much more contagious. Everyone, including fully vaccinated individuals, should wear masks in, when indoors in public settings. And the CDC recommends that community leaders encourage vaccination and masking to prevent further outbreaks. And we have done that all along. CDC recommends universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors to K through 12 regardless of their vaccination status. And the last thing that I will say is if you are homebound and you have not yet been vaccinated, please take this moment to call 211, and they will get you on that homebound list so that arrangements can be made to get you vaccinated. If you have a family member who is homebound and needs your help getting that appointment, please help them get it. That's it.
Thank you. Some very serious news, not, not great news, but we appreciate the information. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
I was certainly going in the wrong direction, which, yeah, is pretty terrible news. I don't think anyone really wants to have to go backwards in the precautions, but since so many people are not getting vaccinated, it seems there's really no other choice. So if you don't like it, encourage everyone you know to please get vaccinated.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I was in a meeting on Monday with somebody who had a breakthrough case, and he was sick. He was absolutely sick. He didn't have to be hospitalized, but a week after it had started, he just still sounded terrible. So it's, well.
And just to, where, what, where are we at with our vaccination rate in Monroe County? What percent are we at of, do you know, right off?
Yeah, we, yes, as of yesterday, we were at 56.9% fully vaccinated of our eligible population. We still have a lot of outreaches planned. We are planning to go to schools. We go to schools and do flu shot clinics, and we will have Pfizer vaccine available for students who are 12 and up when we go do those school clinics this fall. So we encourage people, if, if they can't get it before then, to, to certainly make arrangements to get that at that time.
Yeah. And don't you have people going out to Hoosier Hills Food Bank on Friday from 10 until noon?
Yes, we do. We, yes, they continue to do lots and lots of outreaches. But yes, they will be at Hoosier Hills Food Bank this Friday.
With, with J&amp;J, so it's just a single shot?
Yes, yes.
So, so if somebody wants to get vaccinated and they haven't been vaccinated yet, where should they go?
The best place to, to really go to see what your options are is still that ourshot.in.gov, because there's a list of all of your options right there. I, I will mention, we have kind of at the Public Health Clinic, what we've called Moderna Mondays. Now, I, I want to caution people that September, when we start doing those school clinics, that's going to interfere because we have one, these are two-dose vaccines, right? And so people that you do the first time, they've got to come back, you know, in a month to, to get that second shot. And then we're going to be doing school clinics. So there will be some limited availability on Mondays for a little while in September as we sort of catch up in the, that realm. But that ourshot.in.gov, you don't have to get your vaccine here. You can get it in another location. So pick a place and a time that's convenient for you. Just, I, I hope that you will do it.
Right. Thank you so much for this great information, and we're going to be speaking again very soon. So thank you for that. Always great information, not always the best news, but that's not your fault. And let's turn now to emergency management. Allison Moore, good morning.
Good morning. I'll start with staying in that COVID update as well. We do have masks available through the Emergency Management Department. We have been able to deliver several different masks to several different areas throughout the community on Friday and then early this week as well. And so if you're an individual that might want a mask and does not have one or just needs a new one, you are welcome to, to give our office a call, and we can make those arrangements. We have masks at our fire departments that are jurisdictionally scattered, of course, throughout our county, and those addresses and phone numbers are on our county website. If you're a business that would like to have masks readily available for individuals that might be coming into your business and you do not have masks, you are more than welcome to give our office a call, and we will see if we can make arrangements to get you some as well. So I just wanted that note for the record. We have blood drive scheduled August 26th and 27th at the Convention Center. They are both during that 1 to 7 timeframe. And then starting in September, our friends at IU Health are going to help us out again. We love to collaborate with them, and they are going to host our, our blood drive at the IU Medical Arts Building. So starting in September, we'll have our blood drive scheduled there at their location. So all of those times and dates are on our county website, and they're also on the Red Cross website. So if you're interested in making that donation, I encourage you to hop to the website and get that information. And it is now August, and so I'd like to mention that we are focusing on children preparedness this month. And there are lots of great opportunities to talk to your kiddos about preparedness in a way that is not overwhelming and does not scare them. And there's a lot of games and a lot of activities that you can find at the ready.gov website. And so we have put that on our, on our county page as well. And so if you are a, a family that has smaller children, we'll be kind of focusing on different age groups in that children range this month. But if you have small children and you'd like to talk with your kiddos about preparedness and being prepared, then please go and check out our website, and it will link you to that ready.gov website where you can download various games and activities to teach your children preparedness in a safe and not-so-scary manner. So that's what I have for you today. Any questions for me?
Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, is that just general preparedness, or is it preparedness for any particular thing?
It's, it's really more for just any preparedness in general. But when you go there, there are different to-go kits that you can get together for various different disasters. So once you kind of dig in, you can navigate as broad or into the weeds as you would like to get with your family preparedness.
Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, and, and it probably includes things like preparedness for your pets too, doesn't it?
It does. It has the whole, the whole family togetherness, yes.
Thank you.
Awesome, awesome idea. It's always great to be prepared and to do it in a not-so-scary way for kids. You want them to feel secure. Very good. Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. Next, we will turn to Lisa Ridge, Highway Department. Good morning.
Good morning. Same here in the Highway Department, paving and patching and trimming trees. I did want to state that our Rogers Street Bridge rehab started this week. So that road will be closing for about 30 days. It's on Rogers Street between 11th and 13th Street. So we would ask you to have patience and avoid that area for the next 30 days. That is one of our community crossing grant projects, and that's pretty much all I have if you have any questions.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
No. Thanks for the great work.
Thank you.
And it's a good time to remind folks to be careful driving. The school buses are back. And to also keep an eye out for great road crews that are all throughout the community. Just slow down a bit and make sure you're keeping an eye out for all of this. Right. Thank you so much, Ms. Ridge. All right, next we have an update from Rural Transit. Ms. Sellers? Well, I know she's here.
I'm sorry. Are you able to hear me now?
Yes, we are. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Good.
I'm Lisa Sellers. I'm with Area 10. I've been employed here for the past 10 years. I started out as a driver and moved into the dispatching role, and now I'm serving as Assistant Transit Manager. I'd like to begin by giving you an idea of what our ridership over our four-county area that we service has looked like during the past three years. And I just pulled our second quarter trip, ridership trip numbers from 2021. This past second quarter, we had 6,210 riders. Last year in 2020, we had 3,682 riders. So there's a dramatic drop during the pandemic. The year prior to that, 2019, for the same quarter, we had 20,411. So our ridership dropped 90% over that timeframe. But with, slowly, we are recovering from that. We also have installed a GPS device in each of our vehicles, and that was provided by our insurance carrier. And the device simply plugs in under the steering wheel area and monitors the speed and location of each of our vehicles. We have used this on occasion just to check that drivers are staying under the posted speed limits. And we can also see their location on a map of where they might be in accordance to their next pickup if a passenger were to call and say, my, my driver's not here yet. How long till they get there? We can just simply pull it up on the map and let them know they're right around the corner or they're going to be two to three minutes. And again, that was provided at no charge through Philadelphia Insurance Company for our vehicles. And that's, that's the two topics I picked. I would like to see if you have any suggestions on future updates from Rural Transit, if there's any topics you're interested in.
Okay. Thank you so much for joining us today. Let's see if there are comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
Just, I'm pleased that you are still hanging in there. Rural Transit is certainly something that's very important, and hopefully ridership will continue to go up again.
Commissioner Giffens?
Do you think that people's use of telehealth is part of what, not just COVID, but telehealth that is driving some of the decreased demand? Since people don't need to go to the doctor in person?
Right. We did notice a lot of people would call and cancel their appointments because they were doing the, the virtual with the doctors. That kind of faded in some of the communication between our clients and us, and it seemed like they were starting to go back. I have fear that it may go back to the virtual again with some of those.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much for the great information. We appreciate you joining us today. Let's see if there are any other department heads who have a, an update for us, a departmental update. Just raise your hand in the Zoom screen. Okay, I don't see any. So with that, we'll move on to item four, which is public comment. And this public comment section are, is reserved for items that are not on our agenda, not on our agenda. I know many of you here for some other agenda items, and we'll get to you. If you have public comment for an item not on our agenda, you will have three minutes, just as we've always done. The same holds true for comment during our regular agenda items. And once you get to 2 minutes and 30 seconds, you will hear a tone. Thank you so much, Ms. Dayton. And when you hear that tone, that means you have 30 seconds to wrap up your comments for us. And with that, let's see if anyone has public comment for items not on our agenda. Please raise your hand in the Zoom program. It looks like we have one. Jack S.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Sure can.
There's a lot of information floating around about the city's annexation. There's been a lot of numbers floating around about the city's annexation. And I'm a county resident. I live in Elletsville, so I'm mostly immune to it. But I'm wondering if the commissioners might individually speak on what efforts can the county do to aid the citizens groups that are out there trying to stop this effort by the county to take portions of the county's tax base, the township's tax base, the library's tax base, the volunteer fire department's tax base? And if you can't stop it, do you intend to raise the assess, or raise the rates to cover that cost? Or are you going to cut costs to match the $3 million-plus dollars you're going to lose? That's it.
Great. Thank you so much. Let's see if there are other comments or questions. We'll, I could provide a brief answer for you. And Mr. Cockrell, I think, can jump in on some of this as well. We have annexation information on our website at co.monroe.in.us. If you go to our homepage, you will see two annexation-related items that are specific. One is a report from Baker Tilly that the Monroe County Commission in order to review the financial analysis done by the city's consultants. That report is there. There's also a very handy tax estimator tool for those who are targeted for annexation. You can look at your current tax bill and see what it would be if you were a city resident. That's different than the way the city provided their information for taxpayers. And as for budgets, that is a question for the county council, which is the fiduciary part of county government. And Mr. Cockrell, do you want to address the other question about what, what can we do?
Let me get my camera on. Yeah, I, I can address that question somewhat. The county has, has remained neutral throughout this process. And so they have, they've, the county has felt that its role is to provide the information as Commissioner Thomas just described. And really, it's up to the people and individuals in the areas proposed to be annexed at this point to kind of make a determination of whether they want to file a petition for remunstrance. That process, the remunstrance process, does go through the county's auditors, county auditor's office, but does not begin until after the city council has made the decision of where and if to annex property and have provided notice to both, to be published in the paper and to people who are in those annexation areas.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. And it is true indeed, as the commenter pointed out, that their annexation impacts every county resident and every taxing unit, whether you're targeted for annexation or not, whether you live, already live in the city or town or not. So it is an important item, and it is, it is something that we hope people are all paying attention to. And our goal has been to provide information. Do my colleagues want to add anything?
Just that if you can possibly attend today's city council meeting for public comment, which starts at 3:00 and will actually continue until 9:00 with a bit of a break, please do. The council really needs to hear how you feel about the possibility of being annexed. And I should also mention that I believe there will be a three-minute limit on how long the comments can be. So be prepared for that.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I, even though I live inside the city, I, I am afraid of what, that it will impact me as well. I was doing some research yesterday, and in 2017, the city spent 700, over $770,000 on its annexation attempt. And so that, that's my tax dollars that went for that. And so I wonder how much this attempt is, is costing. You know, when I look at over 3/4 of a million dollars, that's a, that's a bit, chunk of change there. So I, I am concerned about what the impact even it will have on me inside the city.
Yeah, absolutely. Great. Thank you so much. Let's see if there are any other comments or questions not, for items not on our agenda. And I do not see any. So with that, we will move on to our regular agenda items. Item five, please.
Move approval of the minutes for April, for July 28th, 2021. I'd like to go back in time, babe.
Second. At least you didn't go into the future, Commissioner Jones.
I usually do that. We have a motion and we have a second. Comments, edits, revisions? All right. Seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of minutes, July 28th, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket accounts payable August 4th, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Good morning, Mr. Miller. Tell us all about it, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. The total for claims was $752,165.43. As you likely noticed, this docket did not contain any distribution of funds, so that certainly lowered that amount. The most notable claim was $221,250.75 to Monroe County Public Library for cats. for cats for January through September of this year. Next was Anthem Blue Cross and Blue Shield, which was $174,312.51, which was primarily for July claims. Finally, the treasurer state was in the amount of $72,981, which was for the examination of MCCSC and RBB CSC records.
Right. Thank you so much, Mr. Miller. Let's see if there are comments, questions. Commissioner Jones?
None this time.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
All right, excellent. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Just raise your hand in the Zoom screen. I do not see any comments. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on our accounts payable, claims docket accounts payable August 4, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to new business. Item A, please.
Move to approve health order and regulation regarding masks.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Good morning again, Ms. Cottle.
Good morning. So I shared earlier with you kind of where we're headed and that the numbers are getting worse as opposed to better. And the Delta variant appears to be what's driving much of this. Our vaccination rate is still under 60%. And it is the, it's this information and the data that we're looking at and the new CDC guidelines and recommendations for people wearing masks when indoors and public places, regardless of their vaccination status at this point, that the Board of Health met yesterday. They're bringing forward with, to you today to hopefully approve a new health order and regulation that will require masks in indoor public places. It also does require signage, so clear signage at entrances to those businesses. We know that it is difficult for businesses and we appreciate that. We appreciate their efforts. We do believe that most people will follow that if they know right up front as they are coming in that masks are required, the majority of people will follow that requirement. And so hopefully that will reduce the need for businesses to have negative encounters. So hopefully this will be short-lived. Keep in mind that when we talk about kind of our metrics map and the yellow and the blue, that when things are getting worse, those colors change as those numbers change. But when we are going back and seeing improvement, we want to see a steady improvement. So we have to have two weeks, for instance, we would have to have two weeks in blue before that advisory map will truly go back to blue. I think that I mentioned during the updates that there is a slight difference between the CDC's COVID tracker. 50 cases or more per 100,000 is considered substantial. So if you look at yellow in the state's metric, it is anything, it's under 100, right, is yellow. So this order does have kind of a sunset date of September 30th. So that unless the board comes back and looks at data and decides to extend it or make some changes to it, it would expire then. Or it will expire when we are in blue and our cases per 100,000 have fallen below that 50 mark. So we would have to be in blue essentially two weeks on that individual map before we would officially be blue. And typically, I would expect another week or two before those numbers, maybe more before those numbers would actually drop below 50. So we are anticipating, you know, just kind of forecasting that it could take four, six weeks for that to happen. But, you know, it's not in our hands. It's in everyone else's hands as to how quickly we might see those improvements. So that's kind of, we listened, the board took public comment yesterday during their meeting. They incorporated some of the suggestions that were made by the public. And so we feel like this one is the least restrictive, but yet meets CDC guidance and our current situation. I know some people have said, can't you wait and see what people will do on their own? And, you know, that's great. I fully appreciate that. We are hoping that this intervention will actually get us out of this much quicker than waiting and then waiting until we're orange or red and then putting it in place and having a longer distance to go. So the board did approve it unanimously yesterday and the health officer had initiated it. And so we are bringing it to you today to hopefully approve so that it can take effect. We are also working on some updated signs so businesses can post their own signs. But we've always made signs available on our website that they can print. We have a few window clings still available if people want them. So we're working on updating those.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Cottle. And thank you again to our great Board of Health and Dr. Sharp for all your great work throughout this entire pandemic. It is not over until it's over. Commissioner Jones, comments, questions?
I don't think anyone really wanted to go here. We've been hearing a whole lot from the public about it and clearly people are pretty unhappy. As am I and I suspect pretty much everyone. The best way to get out of this situation is going to be to wear your masks and get vaccinated. These are the ways that the pandemic can be controlled and eventually brought to an end. So please, please do wear your mask and do encourage people to get vaccinated.
Right. Thank you. Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, I attended the health board meeting yesterday and I was so impressed with both the contribution of the health board members, but also how responsive they were to members of the public and their suggestions. I mean, that's why you have a sunset kind of mechanism in there because they were responsive. And I really, really appreciated that. But the numbers are going in the wrong direction. And in addition to masking, the fastest way to get out of this is for people to get vaccinated.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Yeah, and I agree, Commissioner Giffens, that board responded so quickly to the ideas from the public. And so we really appreciate everybody's insight and contribution to creating a really good ordinance here, or order, I should say here. I have a couple of things to note. You know, first of all, our enemy is COVID. It is not the mask order, the health order, it is not people who are unvaccinated. There are people who cannot get vaccinated because of their age or their health status. And so, you know, the enemy here is COVID and we know what we can do to help defeat the enemy. And so please do all you can to do that. I'll note also that I just had a little bit of a text conversation with our administrator. And so we do still have signage available for businesses. Downtown Bloomington, Inc. also does as well. We'll create more as we need to. And it's great that it's also available on the Health Department website. To pick one, signage up from our office, we're on the third floor of the Monroe County Courthouse. Please pick it up before 3:00 PM. If you have questions, you can call our office at 349-2550. And Dina will help you out. Thank you, Dina. So with that, let's see if we have, which I'm sure we do, public comment on this item. Please raise your hand in the Zoom screen. And a reminder that you have three minutes and you will hear a tone at two minutes and 30 seconds to indicate that you have 30 seconds remaining in your comment time period. Our first commenter, Troy Guthrie. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me?
Sure.
Perfect. Well, good morning, Commissioners. I know that you're going to be voting to reinstate the health order, but I would like to voice my concern over this decision because to me, it flies in the face of science and statistics. I understand the CDC has given recommendation for mask mandates, but it's a recommendation that does not match the data. I have a few pieces of data that I'd like to share. First, according to WTHR, only 0.12% of cases in Indiana over the last week were from vaccinated individuals. This means that 99.88% were from those unvaccinated. Secondly, according to CNN, less than 0.001% of fully vaccinated have had a fatal breakthrough case and less than 0.004% of fully vaccinated have been hospitalized. Third, according to the Indiana COVID dashboard, 0.09% of vaccinated people have been diagnosed with COVID having a breakthrough case. And although a vaccinated person may have a breakthrough case, it's slightly less likely than one in 1,000. I know that a lot of people say this, we need to do this to protect others. But if there's a one in 1,000 chance that a vaccinated individual has COVID, that person then has to transmit the virus. Then there's a one in 100 chance that a person who catches COVID dies. That means that there's a one in 100,000 chance that a vaccinated person leads to someone's death. That's much higher than the chances of killing someone in a car accident, yet we still drive. So should we cancel driving to protect others? I know also people say that we need to do this to protect children under 12 who cannot be vaccinated. According to the CDC, 95% of American deaths due to COVID occur in individuals 50 and over. Again, a vaccinated individual has a one in 1,000 chance of getting COVID. According to the CDC, there have been 51,000 deaths in Americans ages 0 to 17 and 340 of those were COVID-related. That means that it's 6.6 out of 1,000. So the chances of a vaccinated person causing a child's death is at best 6.6 out of 1 million. It's more likely a child dies from drowning, almost four times more likely, or in a car accident, almost nine times more likely. Again, we allow, we allow for driving and we allow for pools and beaches to be open. If we're going to make a decision based on science and statistics, then the decision is clear. Requiring masks for vaccinated people does not add up. But if we're making a decision based on fear tactics or more control, the mask mandate will be reinstated. And then I assume we'll see a no driving and no swimming mandate shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see if we have, we do, we have some other. Jack S.
Good morning again. I have a couple of simple, quick comments to make. Bloomington is, or Monroe County, as we know, is a very unique community. Our population surges by at least 40 to 50% for nine months out of the year. And while our testing positive rate has gone up, it might be more accurate to say that the number of tests that we're doing has fallen by more than a factor of 10. I don't know if the Health Department takes that into consideration, but it appears as if they do not. Also, we're not doing any random testing anymore. I presume that most of the positive tests that we're seeing are either people going to their doctor or being, showing up at the hospital. That's a very poor sample of a generic population of approximately 150,000 people. So I would hope that would be something that people would consider. The CDC is basing their most recent guidance on something called the Province Town Effect that happened in Cape Cod. One of the things that's been omitted about that, there were over 60-something thousand people crammed into a community that's normally 3,000 people. Out of that, there was 925 positive cases. That's a rate of spread of about one and a half percent. I know that there's a lot of people talking about the amount of virus and the breakthrough cases. But that's, I think most communities would really be happy with a one and a half percent spread rate. The other comment is, you could make a voluntary rule until IU gets back, which is going to happen in about two weeks. I'm pretty sure that they've committed to do the same level of random testing this they have done in the past. It would be interesting to see that information before you make a hard decision that obviously is going to be somewhat controversial. And the last comment is, if you do pass the mask mandate, I hope that you do, or someone does, a better job of enforcement because towards the last part of the, when things were really bad, the mask mandate was really basically a joke. There was little or no enforcement. I talked to numerous people at stores and I was wearing my mask. I said, are you even going to say anything to the people that are walking in? And we all remember some of the confrontations. And so I hope there's better enforcement. And also what passes for a mask is kind of a joke nowadays. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate your comments. Next, we have Shray Patel. Good morning.
Good morning. I figure, you know, maybe voicing my personal beliefs about the coronavirus isn't going to change much of how you think, but I think mainly what I wanted to ask as an Indiana University student, what will Monroe County's impact look like? I'm mainly confused and a little curious to hear about communal housing, maybe like Greek organizations or anything, dorms that live in a communal setting and whether there will be any restrictions on that like we saw last year. And if those restrictions exist, will anything happen to larger Indiana university events like football and basketball? And I would just appreciate some guidance on that, if you wouldn't mind.
Great. Thank you so much. We're going to, we're going to go ahead and ask Ms. Cottle to respond to that, if you don't mind. That would be great.
Certainly. So IU is state property and I know that they are having discussions about how this order will impact them and what they will do. A couple of things, and this is a question that came up and it's, one of the things we made sure was in this order that was in one of our last orders, but it is because we kind of tried to listen to people and take it into effect. So if you are speaking, so when you look at the exemptions, if you are speaking, so for instance, a professor at IU would be an example, or a pastor in a church or one of the commissioners speaking at a public meeting. If they are distanced, then they would be able to take that mask off to make that presentation. So that's something that we did consider and make sure was in there as an exemption in relation to testing in terms of kind of coming back. I would say probably the amount of testing that IU did probably kept our percent positivity actually lower than it truly was for the community as opposed to the other way around. But we do look at that and try to factor that in as much as we can with the information that we have. I do know that with IU's requirement for vaccination, their testing, while they will still be doing testing on those who have exemptions or have not been vaccinated, the level of testing that they'll be doing will be less than what it was last year as well. In terms of communal living, we do not currently have any specific regulations. The Board of Health did put forth recommendations for communal living and that was in relation to IU's vaccine requirement. So we have been working, talking with any of the houses that had questions and so forth. So they are still houses that had questions and so forth. So they are still expected to have isolation and quarantine space. Those kinds of things are still expected. And then the only other thing that I would say is to just remember that the Delta variant is 1,000 times more, more that the variant carry up to 1,000 times more virus than other strains. So this is definitely easier to transmit even if you are a breakthrough case. So yes, we recognize that breakthrough cases are a small portion of cases, but we are seeing an increased amount of breakthrough cases.
Thank you. I was just, I appreciate the work and I look forward to a safer, more fun school year for someone who's 20.
I hope so. Sounds good. I think we all are excited about that possibility. Next, we have Scott Reynolds.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good to speak with you again. I first just wanted to register that I was one of the public commenters at yesterday's Board of Health meeting and I just very much appreciated the opportunity to speak there. Today, I won't address anything particular about the order in terms of its details, except perhaps to suggest that the effectiveness time might be 12:01 tomorrow morning in order to give businesses time to adjust and make sure that word gets out appropriately based on the final order. But on the bigger picture, I just, I would like to encourage us, US Commissioners, the Board of Health, to really think seriously about what our goal here is. I think that's something that we haven't really heard clearly articulated. A possible goal, for example, would be zero COVID in our community. And I'm not sure that that's attainable. I think the implicit goal here is a return to blue status as judged by the state of Indiana, but I think we have to ask ourselves, what is special about blue status? I mean, why is blue status the measure that we would be taking as most important for our community? Because I think even if that is our goal, we have to think about it in the context of other factors or other pieces of data such as what is our hospital capacity? Are we actually in danger of running out of hospital beds? Has there been an actual surge of severe COVID cases or deaths in our community? I know that we would all like to prevent deaths of any kind. Nobody wants that to happen. Nobody wants severe illness. But I think as the first speaker today mentioned, I mean, we always engage in these balancing balancing acts. And I think it's just important that we have a goal and we understand it in terms of the context of our community so that we know where we're getting, where we're going, what we hope to achieve. And I feel like that might be in people's minds, but maybe has not been clearly articulated enough. And so I thank you for your time again and appreciate your work.
Thank you so much. Any closing comments, Ms. Cottle?
I, yes, I thank you, Scott, for those, those words and, and the questions.
And I, I would say, yes, while we would all love to have no COVID in the community, that is not a reasonable expectation.
I can't hear you, Penny.
Yeah. Did you cover your microphone or? You're not muted, but you're very quiet.
We can't hear you. Okay.
No.
We can hear you now, now.
All right. I don't know what happened, but all right, it, I don't know. So sorry about that. So we do meet regularly with the hospital. We do take into consideration what's going on at the hospital. We are seeing hospitalizations increase. So those are always concerns and we try to, to meet regularly so that we are getting input from all the different areas of the community and, and looking at as full a picture as, as we can honestly. And I, I've lost my train of thought a little bit. Scott, I, timing, I think that's up to the Commissioners. Certainly, you know, I can appreciate that as well in terms of when this may or may not take effect. And I know that I was starting to tell you something that I'm sure was just brilliant, but I can't remember what that was and that's a joke, but so if you can remember that, I know that there was another piece of a question. Oh, I know what it is. Never mind. So yes, we would love to have no virus circulating at all in the community. Is that an expectation or a realistic one? No, it is not. So that is not the end goal here. There are very few things. We can look at influenza. It still circulates, you know, chickenpox and mumps, all those things still circulate, but what we want is minimal spread. So we, we want to be able to contain this so it's minimal. So blue in and of itself isn't, you know, the key factor. It's what that means for us and that we are seeing a consistent reduction in the amount of community spread of this infection that we're seeing.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Cottle. It looks like we have Dave Askins.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
We sure can. Good morning.
Thanks. I just wanted to follow up on a comment that Mr. Reynolds made. What is the effective date and time for this order? And you also mentioned that there's signage for businesses available. Could you clarify if the order itself requires the posting of signage by businesses, or is that just something that, that you figure businesses will want to have in place and you're providing some support for that? Thanks.
Right. Thank you. Ms. Cottle?
The order does require signage. It doesn't require a specific sign. And so just as we did before, we want to make some signs available so that if a business chooses to use something and not use their own time and energy to develop a sign that they can go on our website, there should be some already posted from before. We are currently trying to update some so that there'll be some new ones. And we still have the window clings that we had before as well. The order that the Board did would make this take effect at noon today. There was a public comment and a request that asked to push that back. So that would be up to the Commissioners to decide if they wanted to make that change or not.
Thank you. All right. Let's see if my colleagues have any comments or if you, if you'd like to make a motion to change the effective day or time.
Before, before you do that, can I, there, there are some, I'm reading the chat and there seems to be other people having audio issues. And so there were some questions in there that I think, given the technology today, I think we probably should address. I think Ethan Burks from WFIU, I think Mr. Askins just asked his first question. The second question, does the measure apply to Indiana University and override its masking policies? Penny, I believe you've already answered that, but if you wanted to, to kind of directly answer that, that would be great.
Yes, I do not see it overriding their masking policies. I do know that they're having conversations as they do continually about how they will address that, given this order, if it does pass.
And I think the next question of how would this affect faculty, staff, students working inside buildings at IU, I think the answer is the same. The last question I see here is where can we find a copy of the final order? I'm assuming that after this gets discussed and goes through the Commissioners' meeting, we'll post that on the website. The county website. So, you know, once a determination by the Commissioners is made, look for us to get it on the website as soon as we can. I guess would be.
Typically, we do post health orders right on the homepage, co.munro.in.us. Okay. Thank you. That's my bad for not checking the chat. That's not something we typically have to deal with. So keeping track of attendees, raise hands and now chat. Thank you, Mr. Cockrell and Commissioner Jones. Did you have any final comments?
Actually, I would like to make a motion. I move that we change the effective date to eight o'clock tomorrow morning, which would be August 5th, 2021.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Does that raise any concerns for you, Ms. Cottle?
Not, not at all.
All right. We go ahead and get, have a vote on the motion to amend the health order.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
Great. Any, any other comments from my colleagues on the board? Yeah, Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, we have gotten a number of emails. I haven't been able to go through things today, but we have been trying to respond to people individually. We are listening. I don't want people to think we're tone deaf at all. But I wanted to say that I will be voting to support this health order and regulation because of the contagiousness of the Delta variant variant and the fact that there are a lot more breakthrough cases. It's been our goal all through this to help keep businesses and schools open, people moving, people employed. And so we feel like this is one of the ways that we can do that.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And yes, we've read through everybody's comments to us and we may not be able to respond to them all immediately, but we definitely read your emails and appreciate them. And I am going to second what Commissioner Giffens said, that this is how we prevent any kind of a shutdown or taking even another step back. We don't want that. We want schools to be open and we want businesses to be open. And we want people to feel safe in our community. And the best way to do that is to just put a mask on. It's not a huge ask. It really isn't. Especially if you think about all the folks who go home to others who are children or immunocompromised. And we really have to stop this spread. And it's unfortunate that we haven't reached a decent vaccination level in our community. It's, it's really sad because the US is now at 70% with at least one shot of adults. But we, we really have to get folks vaccinated and that's going to be very important for us. Okay, so with that, Mr. Cockrell, we please call the roll on the health order and regulation regarding masks. The amended health order.
All right, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Okay, next item, please.
Move to approve Exxon Enterprises for a new camera system agreement. Fund name, Public Safety LIT. in an amount of $14,553.45 per year for a total of $64,739.99 for a five-year term.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Good morning, Mr. Evans. Tell us all about this, please.
Hi, I'd like to start out by making a correction to that amount. When I submitted the agenda request, I used the wrong number for the annual amount that we owe for this particular deal. The, the amount you'll be voting on today is actually $12,947.99. The 14,000 number came from a different part in the quote that shows a particular discount that we got at the end of negotiating for the deal. So the amount that you're voting on, and I believe you'll probably have to, you know, re, you know, remove, do, do a new motion is $12,947.99. Essentially what this is, these are cameras for the interview rooms in the Sheriff's Department. They, there are four different zones within the Sheriff's Department that they do interviews with, with suspects and whatnot. This is to have cameras and microphones in those rooms to be recorded on localized servers and then put up in our cloud space that we're getting from Exxon, actually in the next agenda item. That's pretty much it, you know, the broad strokes of it. These are for the interview rooms in the Sheriff's Department.
Great. Thank you so much. Did you want to go ahead and amend the motion?
Yes, I'd like to amend the motion to, for an annual payment. I hope I got this down right, of $12,947.99 for the annual payment and for the five-year term, $51,991.96.
Actually, the, the total contract cost was correct, the 64,003. The, and the annual amount for the first year is one cent less than subsequent years because of the math of the situation. So actually, you know, for the first year, it's $12,947.99. For the four subsequent years, it's $12,948 either.
All right, let me try this again. I would like to amend the motion to, for the annual amount, $12,947.99 for the first year. For the four subsequent years, it'll be $12,947.99, sorry, $12,948 for a total of $64,739.99.
Second.
All right. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the amendment?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is amended three, zero.
All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just raise your hand on the Zoom screen or send a chat. Okay. I do not see any. So, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the amended motion to approve Exxon Enterprises' contract for new camera system?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved three, zero.
Great. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Mr. Evans, are these the correct numbers?
Yep, yep, these are right.
Okay, thank you. Didn't want to have to make three motions again. Move to approve Exxon Enterprises for new body cameras agreement. Fund name, Public Safety Lit. Fund number 1170-47100-0000-0068. I mean, not the last dash. In the amount of $143,769.1 per year for a total over a five-year term of 718,445.5.
Second.
Great. We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Evans?
Yes. Okay, so this is to replace the entire fleet of body worn cameras for all of the road deputies, all of the jail staff, the reserves, and then a handful of and then a handful of, we've got some public process servers and detectives within the department. This is a five-year contract. It also includes cloud storage space of the evidence, which is going to be a huge improvement for us in the tech services department. Over time, we're going to be able to offload the storage of this video evidence, which is voluminous. I mean, it takes up a lot of space on our network. It's going to be stored in cloud space, which, you know, actually is probably the best part of this particular agreement and involves giving the officers the tools to, you know, to process those videos. It also includes an integration with our dispatch so that when calls are made, the GPS coordinates and things of that nature will be automatically tagged as metadata with the evidence. It also includes a feature where the GPS coordinates are transmitted in real time to an application that the sheriff or someone in their office can have, separate from dispatch. So if we ever run into an issue where an officer is maybe, you know, we've not heard from them for a while, we can ping their body cam and see their exact GPS coordinates. And there's quite a few features to this contract, but those are the highlights.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this sounds like a very good contract. I'm just curious, what do the sheriffs do to process the video?
Right now or after we use this?
Maybe both.
So essentially, the, and it's not so much the sheriff processing, it's when, when there's an incident that results in footage being used as evidence that ends up being a chargeable case within the court system, that evidence is then stored on our local network in a fairly rudimentary, you know, it's basically just put in a series of directories with very little ability to search through that. And so typically, the person from the prosecutor's office that takes care of that evidence will send out an email saying, okay, the evidence for such and such a case is located in this directory. Over time, there ends up being, you know, hundreds of files in that directory that then the public defender and the prosecutor's office has to, has to go through to find, which from a workflow and, you know, from a workflow standpoint, it really creates a lot of delays and whatnot. This will, basically with evidence.com, all of the video evidence has metadata that can be used to search. You can search on a, on a GPS location that an incident happened. You can search on arresting officers. You can search on suspect names. All of those things will greatly speed up and make more efficient the work for both the public defender and the prosecutor. It also allows for the processing on the part of the sheriff's office. So for instance, they can take evidentiary video that by statute has, certain things have to be redacted, like bystanders' faces, things of that nature. I think maybe license plates and things of that nature. In a very user-friendly interface, it allows someone with very minimal training to say, okay, this, this face needs to be redacted. They draw a mask around that face and there's an AI built into the system. So when that person moves through the frame, that pixelated mask moves with them, which enables the sheriff to, you know, someone with very minimal training to be able to do these things. It's very sophisticated. I mean, it's stuff, it's technology we've seen come along just in the last couple of years. So it's, this is, you know, a fairly mature product offering that Exxon is bringing us in that regard.
Thank you, yeah. It does sound like a pretty huge improvement and also something that may speed up case processing in the courts, which is always helpful when that happens.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I noticed that you've gone far afield to find this company. They're out in Arizona. I really appreciate all the research that you constantly do. But I had emailed you about this, so don't want to surprise people. What are some of the items that are being delivered on this contract in 2024 and 2026? I didn't, I don't understand all the terminology that was used there.
Sure, so, you know, that's actually a good question and shows another feature of this particular deal. Because of the nature of body cams, they, those delivery dates are for midway through the contract and at the end of the contract, they replace all of the body cams. So three years into this, we'll get completely new body cams on that ship date that they've got listed there. There's really two reasons for doing that. Number one, as you could probably imagine, body-worn camera is subjected to a lot of stress. You know, heat, cold, being banged around, being tossed on a counter at the end of a shift, they get damaged. You know, they're built to be pretty rugged, but they do get damaged over time. And so essentially, Exxon is going to replace 100% of the cameras at the midway point through the contract. They also do the same thing at the end of the contract. So in theory, we'll get all new cameras at the end of this. The cynical part of me would point out to you that that is a customer retention tool that they do. But at the end of the day, we do get new, new cameras. The other reason why they do that is the technology on these cameras changed pretty rapidly. In three years, the cameras that they're going to be using are going to be a lot different than the ones that we're going to get now. Higher resolution, different features and things of that nature. So they build that into this contract so that we get all new cameras twice through the length of the contract.
That's impressive, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for all your hard work, Mr. Evans. You always find us a great deal and the best technology anywhere. So you're amazing. We really appreciate you. I just have a question about our current service provider. Are we at the end of our contract with them? Is this a smooth transition?
Yes, actually, our current provider is a company called VVIEW that on the day we signed this contract, like five years ago, something like that, they announced publicly that they had been acquired by TASER, which was in the midst of rebranding to Exxon. So in a way, you know, we are transitioning to a different part of the same company. So yes, it's a fairly smooth transition because it's essentially the same company.
Right, thank you so much. Just make sure that information gets up to folks. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand in the Zoom screen or send us a chat. Do not see any. So, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Exxon Enterprises' agreement for new body cameras?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three, zero.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
All right, item D, please.
Move to approve Parks Agreement with Bloods, So, Riggar, Cooper, and James. Fund name: County General/Parks and Rec Professional Services. Fund number: 1000-30013-0803. In the amount of $6,200.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and a second and we have Mr. Robertson here from Parks. Good morning.
So this service agreement with Bloods, So, Riggar, and to our park maps for Cars Farm Park. For uniform look for our hard copy maps, which need to edit some of the information on those maps. Call for us to modify them. Anytime we've got to change. Or in addition to the park, it's a little bit difficult for us to have those translated on our current maps. Some of them were done by different vendors, so they look differently or they all look a little bit different right now. So for us, it'll give us more uniform look. The aesthetics will be better. It's also going to give the surveyor's office a template to use in the county GIS system. And hopefully sometime in the future, we can use these maps for interactive purposes with mobile apps. So I personally am excited to get the ball rolling on this project. If there are any questions about it, I'm happy to answer.
I don't know if it was my internet also went a little unstable there for a second, but we didn't hear everything you said at the very beginning, but we heard like 90% of it in the middle. And I think you said, you said if there are questions, to let you know. So Commissioner, let's say Commissioner Jones first.
No, actually, I don't have any questions. This sounds like a good idea to me, so.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I think that this will, will do a lot of things with getting this kind of digitized as we also look at things like putting things in the park that are markers that when hikers are out or cyclists, you know, if there's an emergency where they are, it just make everything faster, whether it's through dispatch or whatever. So I think that this is a good move.
Right, thank you for bringing this forward. It does sound like a great idea. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. I do not, oh, I do see one. Oh, our surveyor, Mr. Enright Randolph. Good morning.
Good morning. I just want to give a big compliment to John and his effort on this. He really thought it through and we collaborated several times so we can use this information in the future. And I just want to applaud him on his efforts.
Thank you for that. All right, let's see if there's any other comments. Let's see any. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Parks Agreement with Bloods, So, Riggar, Cooper, and James?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
Thank you.
All right, next item, please.
Move to approve SRI Inc. Tax Sale Internet Auction Services Agreement. Fund name: County General. Fund number: 1,000. In the amount of $1,900.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and we have a second and we have Ms. McCollin here. Good morning.
Morning, commissioners. I am here to present the contract for, from SRI to hold the 2021 tax sale online. I'd like to see if you want to make a correction to the amount that I listed in the agenda request. The amount I listed was $1,900. And I was actually just trying to give you a more accurate idea of what the anticipated cost is. The do not exceed amount in the contract, though, is $5,000. And that's just what we started with when we wrote the contract. So it's a do not, not to exceed 5,000, but I don't expect it to be over 1,900 because it's $20 per parcel and we only have 95 parcels left. So I can go into a little bit more detail about the contract. It's the same one, same one that we did last year. It's the same system that we used last year and it worked really well. All of the tax sale parcels, all of those owners are notified by certified mail by the auditor's office. They have until the day before the sale to, to pay out of the tax sale. The sale is October 7th. Bidders usually normally come from across the state and sometimes from across the Midwest to our courthouse. And last year and this year, we were doing it online and it was very efficient and worked very well last year and we expect to have the same results this year.
Great, thank you. It doesn't seem like there's a need to amend our motion because if you only have 95 parcels, then, okay, all right. Just wanted to clarify that. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
I remember this from last year. I'm glad it went so well last year and I think we can expect the same this year and maybe into the future.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, so is the, basically, we're looking at 1,900 as a not to exceed amount because there may be people that come in and pay off their taxes, right?
The 1,900 is based on the number of parcels that are in the tax sale. So we certified, I think, close to 200 and that number can only go down.
Right, that's what I mean.
There will not be any parcels added to that number. So, yeah, I think it's safe to say not to exceed 1,900, but that's not what is written in the contract. So I'm not sure if you want to.
No, no, what I'm just saying is that, that in terms of what we pay out of the county coffers, we know it, it's not going to exceed, yeah. Sorry, I wasn't clear.
And you'll be providing information, a link to this auction site on your website? Correct, on your webpage?
Yes, we will. There'll be information for bidders and the public can also log on and watch the sale if they'd like to and all that information will be on our website.
Excellent. Great, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Don't see any. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the agreement with SRI Inc. for the Tax Sale Internet Auction Services?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
All right, next item, please.
Move to approve the 2021 and 2022 Adult Protective Services Contract. Fund name: Adult Protective Services. Fund number: 9112. In the amount of $275,866.79.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second and we have Ms. Hamlin here to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. This is a request for your electronic signature on this contract that's entered into between the Board of Commissioners, the Monroe County Prosecutor's Office, and Indiana Family Social Services Administration. It's an electronic signature that's required. And if this is approved, I'll get with Angie about how to get that done. I'm happy to take any questions.
Commissioner Jones, comments, questions?
No questions. I, Adult Protective Services is something that's awfully important and I'm glad to see this happening.
Commissioner Giffens?
I had reached out to Ms. Hamlin and asked how this works because it's spread across three different counties. So would you just briefly explain to the public what you shared with me about how this works across, is it Monroe, Lawrence, and Owen, is that right?
No, it's our hub, we're Unit 10 hub. The Social Services Administration at the state contracts with, I'm not sure exactly how many hubs across the state, but our office gets the contract for Morgan, Monroe, and Owen Counties. And so the staff from our office goes out to investigate any allegations of abused or neglected adults in the tri-county area that we cover.
But then if there are, if it goes to the next level in terms of the legal system?
Yes, if our, our staff still prepares most of the paperwork for that and coordinates with staff, but if there's a guardianship in need in Morgan County, our staff still goes to court in Morgan County with whomever is appointed with, from the prosecutor's office in that department up in Morgan County.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate all the hard work, necessary agency. Comments, questions from the public? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen, set us a chat, chat to the panelists. I do not see any, so with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the 2021-22 Adult Protective Services Contract?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve the Michael Chambly Architect Agreement for Highway. Fund name, Motor Vehicle Highway, fund number 1176, in an amount not to exceed $26,790.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second and we have Ms. Ridge.
Good morning. So this, this contract is actually for our new brine system at the highway garage. We will need the architectural services for the building and then the civil services for all the surrounding situations. We have to move some utility lines and things like that. So this is to keep that moving for the new brine system that we're trying to get set up at the highway garage. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Right, thank you. And we considered that system a few weeks back, so. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I have the impression that you'll actually be making the brine, not just, is that just a matter of mixing a whole lot of salt with water?
You are correct. So basically, you house the, best what I've understood, the brine system mechanisms will be housed in the building that is built. And then right on the outside of those buildings, we will have two tanks that will hold the salt water mixture that will load into the dump trucks that will be equipped with the tanks on there for bridge locations. And then we'll move on to different locations such as hills and curves and the more places that would be, have an ice buildup.
Thank you. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, we've talked about the brine system, but I'm really pleased because it'll cost less at one level. It'll also be less damaging to vehicles in terms of the rust and stuff that, because they're not kicking up the same kinds of things onto their vehicles. I just think it's a win-win all around. So will this be in place the coming winter, winter?
That has been our goal the whole time. Of course, everything, materials slowed a lot of things down. So it has been our goal from day one to have this in place for the upcoming winter season. So that's why we're trying to keep moving and get the building started, get the utilities relocated. It's our goal.
We're scrolling.
Yes.
All right, excellent. Thank you for working on this and let's see if there's any public comments on this item through the chat for panelists or raising your hand on the Zoom screen. Seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the motion to approve the Michael Chambly Architect Agreement for Highway?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
Thank you so much and next item?
Move to approve Beam Longest enough LLC for the 2022 through 2025 Countywide Bridge Inspection. Fund name, Countywide Bridge Inspection, fund number 8168, in the amount of $311,241.1.
We have a motion?
Oh, second, sorry. I was reading all my notes about.
It's been a long morning. We're paying the price for short agendas last few weeks. Ms. Ridge, tell us all about it, please.
So we are required by NDOT to have a, our bridges inspected on a four-year cycle. Our compliance month is March of each year. We are required to have the bridges inspected. There's different qualifications for which cycle you are on. It's a four-year contract. We did send out RFPs through NDOT, which is their requirement. The firms were scored by three highway personnel staff members. Beam Longest enough was the highest ranked firm and then everything is sent to NDOT for their approval to make sure our calculations are correct. And we would like to enter that agreement with BLN for the 2022-2025 Countywide Bridge Inspections that will start in March of 2022.
All right, thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I just can't resist asking, what is a scour critical bridge?
That's it. So the way I understand it, it's basically the water that gets underneath the bridges and can do damage to the structure itself. So some of the bridges that, so we get a huge book for our inspections and they are rated and then we monitor those and some of them will fall on an every year inspection versus every two-year inspection.
Thank you. Also, I got the impression that, that the inspections will also include the bridges that the city is actually responsible for?
The city is actually not responsible for any bridges. The, the county is responsible for all bridges within their county limits that's over a 20-foot span and that's even if it falls on a city street.
Okay, I guess I was thinking of culverts.
Yeah, so anything under a 20-foot span would be considered a culvert and we do not maintain those within the city limits.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
So I hope I got these numbers right. Are there 167 bridges that were the counties responsible for or?
We are not. I believe it's at 154, some just, some just require different types of inspections than types of bridges.
Okay.
There can be listed more than once on an inspection, depending on what type of inspection that is required for that phase.
Okay. So I was doing research yesterday and according to the American Society of Civil Engineers, driving on roads in need of repair in Indiana costs each driver $638 a year because of damage to vehicles and tires and stuff like that. And that they found, or they're estimating that 6% of bridges in Indiana were structurally deficient as of 2019. And so I want, I bring this up because we are responsible for all the bridges and while this inspection amount seems high, that's far less of a cost than replacing even one bridge. And so the sooner you can identify problems and avoid having structurally deficient bridges, the better off we're going to be. This, this is to save money in the end.
Absolutely. And I know it seems like a high contract amount of $311,000, but you have to figure that's spread over a four-year period for those inspections. Also, it helps us build a five-year bridge replacement program. Some of these bridges that we can do in-house, not in-house, I will say we do it with local funds and not federal dollars. It also, it allows us to stay ahead, as you're aware, NDOT is already out to fiscal year 2026 for awarding federal aid projects. So we submit every November and those calls. So right now in fiscal year 2025 is the Rockport Road Bridge 308 that was awarded. So we will do design and write away up until that point. And then in fiscal year 2026, that was just awarded, I believe it would have been in the fall because the call was in November, that's fiscal year 2026 for the Baby Creek Bridge. So you need to have these numbers, construction numbers way in advance to be able to submit those applications every year, so you can stay ahead of your bridge replacement program. Some of them are not all replacements, some of them are rehab, some of them are deck overlays to secure the longevity of that bridge. A good mention of longevity on the bridge, Penny just had sent some information to us about, it's called Porchill or Powershill. So I looked into it.
Or Porchill.
Porchill, okay. And it's basically putting a soybean-based sealant over concrete bridge decks. So I did reach out to our consultant. It's something that some other counties do. It's something that we are going to get a quote on and get a price for our bridge maintenance crew that would be able to apply the sealant over the bridges to help longevity of those. But the inspections are very important. Like I said, it helps us build and keep a, a bridge maintenance program going. And also, I believe our sufficiency rating, which is every bridge rating, is around 83, which is good. So out of 154 bridges, I think we've maintained a really good program and stay ahead of the game with this project or I guess this program that we have.
Excellent, excellent, thank you.
Thanks so much. I appreciate that and, and having that plan and having that mapped out in advance is so important for maintenance and repairs. Great work to you and your staff. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You could chat through to the panelists or you can raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Okay, I do not see any, so Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the Beam Longest Enough Agreement for 2022 through 2025 Countywide Bridge Inspections?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
Thank you. Thanks again. All right, next item, please.
Move to approve Resolution 2021-36 Regarding Financial Support for Hoosier Hills Food Bank. Fund name, County General, fund number 1,000, in the amount of $31,010.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell, will you please tell us all about it?
Yes, I will. This is a resolution that's similar to resolutions we've done in the past. As you know, and as we've learned this morning, COVID is still here. It's not going away. It's still causing a lot of need and we've, as a county, we've supported the food pantries and food shelters for the duration of this. This is just a agreement that we would, we would support Hoosier Hills Food Bank to the tune of $31,010.
All right, thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, Hoosier Hills Food Bank has just stepped up and done incredible things during COVID. It's there, the amount of use of them has been magnified incredibly by, by the situation. There's also one particular program that I wanted to point out that's called Farms to Families. And this is a group of wonderful volunteers who show up at the end of every market with a lot of huge big bins and anything that vendors haven't sold and that they think they won't be selling, they can put in these bins where it'll be provided to food pantries or the Hoosier Hills Food Bank. And the vendors actually get paid half the ordinary price for their products, which is very beneficial to the vendors, but also gets a whole lot of very good fresh food out for people to enjoy.
Commissioner Giffens?
I'd like to read just the first paragraph of the letter that we got from Hoosier Hills Food Bank about this and it says, Hoosier Hills Food Bank greatly appreciates the support that the Monroe County Commissioners and Council have provided our agency during the COVID-19 pandemic. The county was one of the first two donors to step up and allow us to make the first purchases of food that saw us through an unprecedented increase in demand and loss of food donations in 2020. And one of the things that, that we've seen, because we, the three of us have been out there, helped, helped package food, have helped distribute food. Commissioner Jones and her husband have donated food and made sure that, that things are good for people. But one of the things that they're starting to see all across the country is that when they purchase food, it's higher quality, it's more nutritious. And so what's going out to families should be even better for their own health. And so I think that, that we're looking not only just at calories to keep people going, but to keep them healthy. So I really am support, in support of this.
Yeah. Yeah, I can't thank the good folks, staff, volunteers, Julie Alonso, board, everybody at Hoosier Hills Food Bank for really stepping up throughout this entire pandemic. And this is just some small thing that we can do to help make sure that they have what they need to make those orders already for, for the holidays, so.
And also, when we were out there one, one Friday, they started asking people if they would like to get vaccinated while they came through the, at Hoosier Hills, at the food distribution and they heard yes from people. And so it's because of their initiative that, that that'll happen this Friday.
Yeah. Let's see if there's any comments or questions from the public. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or send us a chat to all panelists. I do not see any. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on Resolution 2021-36?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
All right, thank you so much. We don't have any appointments today, but I will note that we, we are accepting applications for all boards and commissions. Go to CO.Monroe.in.us. We're especially looking for the Economic Development Group, Commission, the Drainage Board and Affordable Housing. Also, because we know that COVID is not over, we, I want to remind folks of something that we said earlier, signage for businesses is available at downtown Bloomington, Inc. and also in our office, third floor of the courthouse, or you call us at 349-2550 to arrange to get your sign for your business for the mask mandate. Also, because we know that the pandemic is not over, we are continuing the Township Assistance Fund for residents who are struggling to pay for basic necessities and thanks to the council for working on this with us. Township trustees are the closest people to every part of our community. Every resident lives in the township, whether you live in the city, a town or neither. Please contact your trustee if you're having difficulty paying for basic necessities like rents, utilities and food. And they will help you out and that Township Assistance Fund continues only as long as the governor's order, emergency order continues, which for now is to at least the end of August. As Commissioner Giffens noted, the Hoosier Hills Food Bank is having their bi-weekly Fresh Food Friday event this Friday, August 6th at 2333 West Industrial Drive. If you need food, please attend between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM. We'll be out there to help you out. And between 10:00 AM and noon, those who wish to will also be offered the opportunity to receive the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. So thank you again to our Health Department for working out that deal. So if anyone is wanting to get the vaccine, you don't have to pick up the food, but you could come in between 10:00 AM and noon. No appointment needed to get the J&amp;J vaccine, 18 and over only, again, no appointment needed. Also, on annexation, again, we have mentioned this before, but the Baker-Tilly Report, our consultant. consultants' report on the financial impact of annexation is available at co.mone road dot in dot U S. Also, they created a great tool so you can estimate your taxes based on your current tax year if you are, would be annexed into the city of Bloomington. And the city council is holding a public hearing tonight, or today, beginning at 3 p.m. until 9 p.m. There is a three-minute limit per person to speak. It will be in-person at City Hall in the council chambers. And it's also something you can join via Zoom. They're going to take comments both in-person and via Zoom. So if you have an interest in this, which I think every county resident does, please consider making a comment and letting the city council know how you feel. Anything else I have left out or anything else you all would like to add, Commissioner Jones? No? Commissioner Giffens?
I just want to stress that the vaccines are free for people. And so if you need to go out, if you want to go out, if you're willing to go out to Hoosier Hills Food Bank on Friday, please, it's a free vaccine. We, I've heard that question from people, so I just wanted to share that.
Great, thank you so much. What time do we want to return for our work session? Noon, okay, high noon. Does that work for everybody? Okay, great. So our work session will begin at high noon and we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thanks, everyone, and please get vaccinated.